I have 5:32. So, we're going to call the Finance Committee to order. And first item.
What's the sound?
For the Finance Committee is a resolution concerning the execution of the contract for Street Overlay. Is Colby here?
Yes, sir.
I'm just going to introduce or interrupt you, Jeff. We do have, we've got Colby via Zoom. He's in Little Rock. They're having committee meetings. Cody is also here and he'll talk about a few of these items and so will Mark from IT. So.
All right. First one's yours, Colby. Did you want to address that? Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Yeah. And I apologize. I know sometimes there's a delay on these. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, Jeff, I'll, I'll address this one. This is a resolution authorizing the execution of the contract.
Yeah, Colby, it would be better if the guys can turn you up. Yeah. Okay, in the house. You're, we're hearing you fine. It's just, we need a little more volume.
Okay. How's that?
Just keep talking for a minute and they'll, they're going to adjust you in the room.
Okay. We're going to bring this resolution forward. It's for the Street Overlay project. We budgeted for this project. Is it, is the volume okay now?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're okay.
Okay, here we go. So, if you'll remember, we took this out to bid about a month or two ago and we got one bid on this overlay project and it was for $2 million. And we, Mayor's Office talked to James and we felt like there was another entity that might be interested in bidding on it, but they, for some reason, got tied up and weren't able to submit their bid. So, we rejected the first bid and thankfully, we did that. When we got the second bid in, we got a bid for $1,265,000 and some change. So, we're going to save approximately $800,000 by rebidding this project. So, this was budgeted for. So, we're asking for this to be forwarded to the council.
How much was in the budget?
I will have to look up exactly how.
It's not exactly that number though, right?
No, it's not. But we have plenty in the, we budgeted, I believe it's $1 million. I don't have the budget in front of me, but it was $1 million for the overlay program. And then we've got a surplus in our turnback funds, a pretty good surplus in there. So, this will, this will fit a lot better than 2 million.
Okay.
I think the same entity got the overlay project last year as well, if I remember correctly.
And there's no changes in the program as far as the streets?
As far as, as far as I'm aware, I don't believe James made any adjustments to the streets. We did not discuss that, but I'm almost positive there weren't any changes made to lower the bid.
Yeah, these, so that list you've got there should be the same list he presented a few weeks ago.
Yep.
I'll move the resolution before to the recommendation for approval. Second. Okay, we have a motion and second forward with recommendation. Mike, we're on item one, has having to do with the Street Overlay project and they're recommending a bid from APAC in the amount of 1.265 million. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign. Thank you. Second item has to do with the expenditure of funds to acquire property from a basic block in Brick One or I, whatever it is, for the Dean's Trail project. Who's, who's going to address this?
I can do it. It, this is on Dean's Trail Phase 3A. Right there is it is going across Electric Avenue, just on the south side. City's estimate of just, just compensation was 12,100. The property owner provided an appraisal that would raise it to 14,200. And after speaking with the mayor, we thought that that was an amount that was reasonable to bring forward to acquire the easements needed for the project. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I move to forward the resolution to council with recommendation of approval, please.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion forward, motion and second forward with recommendation. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign. All right, thank you. Item number three has to do with authorizing provision of government services for citizens of Springdale from ARPA funds.
Yeah, this has to do with lost revenue. Colby, are you taking that or is Cody?
I can give you the bird's eye view of this. Cody can answer any ancillary questions. Basically, this is the $9 million that we designated as lost revenue from ARPA funding. We are able, the federal government has given us the ability to go in and reimburse the city of Springdale for police and fire salaries out of the lost revenue portion of ARPA funds. And that amount that we've calculated is $4,525,857. So, that would be money that goes into the general fund. And this is the government's way of basically saying, when we have shut things down in your city, we've cut the lifeblood of your sales tax revenue off. And so, we're going to allow you to use some of your ARPA funds to reimburse your city for emergency first responders during that time. So, this is a request for us to move 4.5 million dollars from our lost revenue portion of ARPA funds into our general fund.
And this will allow us to open up funding from what would have paid for that and move it to general or how's that going to work?
Basically, it will offset what we had budgeted for police salaries. And so, that money will really just stay in our general fund unspent and grow our general fund reserves. And we can still, and we can also use that money then for any project the council wants.
It's not tied to the timeline of 2024.
Am I right on that, Cody? There won't be any restrictions. Once it's in our general fund.
Yeah, so essentially, Mayor, it is strictly just for, as far as our concern is for the fire and police salaries and it, it will free up general funds. There will be no additional restrictions on it on the timeline to 2024. So, it's just, it's, it's going towards police and fire salaries, which frees up general fund monies.
And we will have an opportunity, if the council wants to, to do this again. It might, won't, probably wouldn't be this amount or it may be, I don't know. But, but we'll have an opportunity with later budget years to, to address this as well, correct?
That is correct.
And then the last question I got on this is, is there a precedent right now on this, either through the Municipal League or any other city? I'm, I'm for this. I'm just making sure that we don't have to come back and undo this or redo this some other way.
Now, we're, and of course, we're still working with DRS or, but, but Municipal League actually started this conversation and they're encouraging cities to do this if, because it's a, and, and we're, we're going at, Colby, I'll not muddy the water too much, but, but we're going a few extra steps.
That's right.
What, what the Municipal League said we had to, just to be sure we're covering our bases.
Okay. Yep.
You'll see that, I think you'll see that again tonight with a later item where we're redoing a resolution that we don't think was done quite right.
And that's the only concern. I mean, not that it's detrimental, it's just oversight. I move that this gets forwarded to council with recommendation of approval.
All right, we have a motion and second forward council with recommendation. Is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign. All right, thank you very much. Item number four is another resolution concerning ARPA funds having to do with equipment for the IT department.
Okay, Mark.
Mayor, I'll be happy to take this.
Go ahead and start.
Go right ahead.
No Marks on here too.
So, one of the main pillars of, of ARPA expenditures is cybersecurity. And that's one of the main things I wanted cities to focus on. And we went through and analyzed our current systems, our current needs. And we told Mark through our technology, let's look at a list of things that our city needs. And one of the issues with cybersecurity is old and outdated programs. And that's going to be included in this as well. You're susceptible to cybersecurity risk whenever you're using old and outdated technology. Mark has done a fantastic job though, in our IT department of being someone who's very practical and frugal with our expenditures. He's done a great job with that. But it, there's some things that now we're getting to the point where we're going to have to start asking the council through our budgeting process for some technology in cybersecurity. And ARPA thankfully has intervened and allowed us to do that instead of asking through our budget later this year. So, this is an allowable expense. Mark's gone through all this and come up with $607,600 expenditure, which is allowable by the US Treasury.
I'll make a motion that we forward this to council with a recommendation for approval.
Second. All right. Have a motion forward council with recommendation. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign. All right. Item number five. Having to do with authorizing award to Upskill NWA and Northwest Technical Institute from ARPA funds again. And Mayor, did you want to address this?
I'll, I'll start and then Cody can clean up for me for what I don't say right. But, but I, I think the, the best way I can understand this is that, is that the council passed a resolution and approved a resolution for Upskill, which is Jeff's program Jeff's here to represent through Accelerate and Dr. Rollins is here representing NWTI. There was a, there was a capital portion of the, of the resolution and a programming portion. And I think you approved two, right at 2.9 million dollars and just under nine, just under the $900,000 of that was for programming that Accelerate was going to perform. And, and the 2 million for capital, to go toward the capital project of the, the new building that NWTI is going to build. This is a little less and that's because we needed to redo the resolutions anyway. We needed to separate out, this goes back to Kevin's question earlier. We needed to separate out the, the programming, NWTI and INWAC. And, and so, we're just bringing back to you tonight NWTI's portion, the same 2 million that really we'd already approved, just a different resolution. And that programming amount is less because in, INWAC's portion of the programming has been removed from that too. So, we'll, if INWAC and Accelerate want to move forward with the INWAC portion, then that'll come to you later. But we want to go ahead and take care of NWTI and, and Upskill's program. So, but that's why that amount's less.
You're really not asking for any new.
No.
Portion of the ARPA funds.
Right.
You just spinning it in a little bit different way.
Right. We needed to redo the resolutions and Cody can speak to that if, if he needs to, but that, we, we were concerned that they, we didn't have it right the first time. And that's, I think a lot of people are finding that is the, the final, the final rules on the ARPA have come out since.
How much was it we had authorized before? Do you remember?
It was 2 point, almost 2.9 million, I think. And now it's 2.590.
So, there is the possibility though, that the rest of the 310,000.
Yes.
May be requested.
Yes.
At some point in the future. Are we already, is that money still tied up, the 310? You think, Cody, Colby? Either one of you?
Well, this re.
Asking about the difference between the 2.9 and.
Yeah. None of that's gone anywhere, so we're just changing the amount that's.
Well, I mean, I just don't want to.
It's like the 310's not ever been allocated because we're.
Okay.
I think.
It's already kind of dedicated though, right? Because we, didn't we already vote to spend that?
Yes. Jeff, this, this resolution is going to replace that one. So, it's going to negate the amount that was already appropriated. So, you'll see in the now therefore be resolved in the very final part of that. And this resolution is intended to supersede and replace Resolution 8-22 passed on February 8th. So, this will negate the allocation of that other $300,000. So, we'll just have to reappropriate that at the appropriate time.
Okay.
Would the 310 go on INWAC's resolution?
The 310 will go, if, if INWAC, if they move forward with wanting to expand in Springdale, then, and.
And I hope so, yeah.
And Upskill program for them, then that will go toward, yes, it will be, it will be a new resolution.
They'd have to come back now.
They, they would have to come back. They, they've got some things to work out, just like in, NWTI and Upskill's working it out. So, yeah. And I hope they get it worked out. We'd love to see INWAC expand here too.
I'll move the resolution forward with recommendation for approval.
Second.
Dr. Rollins or anyone, anything to say on this?
I think it's bottom Mark.
Okay. Any, any other conversation on this resolution? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign. All right, thank you.
Thank you all.
Am I still on my part? All right, number six.
You're going fast. We should have.
I'm trying to get to the baseball game.
We should have meetings on ballgame nights, every week.
Having to do with applying for funding for construction of a portion of Don Tyson Parkway from Gene George to Highway 112.
Good evening, council. This is our request for this year's surface transportation block grant, Call for Projects. This federal grant program has funded certain phases of projects like Don Tyson and Gene George South in recent years. We currently have federal funding to acquire right of way for Don Tyson Parkway. So, this request is for construction reimbursement. With an estimated construction cost of around 9 million, our 20% local match would be about 1.8 million. And if y'all have any questions, I'm.
So, that 20% would come out of general fund?
That's correct.
Probably depends, yeah, it depends on when it has to. When will we be notified whether we were even successful? Do you know?
It's about August that they.
Okay, well, then it would. It would come out of, but, but the money actually comes out when it's.
When the.
When the project's bid.
Project is, is spent, yes.
So, it'll be a while. But we're committing to match it. And that, that would be the amount.
So, is this designed?
Yes, it's 100% designed.
It's 100% designed.
And we're currently getting appraisals for right of way.
Regional planning reached out to us. There are, there are, there's money that's still in the region. You know, we get an amount of money every year, the region does. And we've got a few, we got a few hoops to jump through before this would be, we would get this award. But, but we've been encouraged to try and put that award. We, we've got a, we've got projects that are near or ready than some of the other area. And so, we're trying to get it. We don't, we sure don't want to send money back. The region doesn't want to send money back. So, we're, we got a good project here that we, we hope that regional planning will, the members will vote to, to award this grant. Because they got, they're going to have to use this money somehow, so.
Well, that, if we're 100% ready on plans, I mean, that's going to really accelerate that.
Yeah. We've been in that, in that queue for a while on, on two projects, Gene George South and Don Tyson.
That's right.
Yeah. We've, we've received federal money step, steps along the way on both those projects. But we're going to try and push Don Tyson Parkway to 112 ahead a little faster if we can get this money.
Make a motion to forward this resolution to council with recommendation of approval.
All right, have a motion and second forward. Council, is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign. I'm sorry. Okay. Any opposed? Like sign. All right, thank you very much.
All right. Counsel, Chairman Overton is not here. So, if somebody'd like to take that one item.
I'll go ahead and take it if that's all right. With the amending of the zoning ordinance and who, Ernest or Ernest, do you want to address this?
Thank you. This is actually on the Planning Commission agenda for tomorrow night's Planning Commission meeting. But occasionally, we do bring ordinances to ordinance committee as well, especially if they involve an amendment to the zoning ordinance that we think the council needs to be aware of before it comes to a city council meeting. And this ordinance would create a separate use unit for transitional housing. And the definition that is used is actually the definition of transitional housing that is used by the Arkansas Department of Corrections. This came to our attention. It gives us a little more flexibility with these types of facilities because it would make it a use in three limited commercial zones, which would give the city to place certain conditions, the ability to place certain conditions on these types of facilities, specifically such as the type of offenses that some of the individuals may have committed, we could limit from being in these types of facilities. I have to confess, we kind of copied what Conway, City of Conway did on this. We actually have a facility already in our city that would fall under this. And just like I said, if it was ever to expand or move locations, then we would have this in place. We've never had a need for it before, but we realized that we needed to amend our ordinance to address this specific type of facility.
So, it would have to fit into a C2, C4 and a C5?
Correct, as a conditional use. It would not be a permitted use.
And you was bringing this forward?
Yes, to Ernest.
We, we, we realized that we did not have a use unit that, that this type of facility specifically fit into. And we knew that the City of Conway had addressed this issue several years ago. So, we reached out to the City of Conway to see what they did. But we also learned that the definition, the state's definition had changed since then. So, we updated that to include what the state's definition is. This definition basically comes from the state's definition of transitional housing.
So, if, if they were want, if someone wanted to put in a transitional housing in a, say a residential neighborhood, it, they'd have to get it rezoned to a C2 or something?
Actually, we already have a use unit for that. This is a different use unit from where it would be in a, in a residential setting. We already have a use unit for that. That, that's already contemplated. But we did not have one, say for example, for the, the facility that we have in our city now.
You mean like a large or multi?
Turning home.
Yeah, larger group type thing.
Yes. And it's a different situation. You get into like sober living situations where there may be a duplex or a house. That's a completely separate situation from this definition. We did, this was something we did not specifically address.
So, you're not really wanting us to take any action on this tonight? The Planning Commission would be acting on it first?
Correct. By, by statute, it has to go to Planning Commission first before it comes to city council. It's just sometimes traditionally, we bring it to committee before you see it for the first, that way you're not seeing for the first time at a city council meeting.
So, it would be forwarded from the Planning Commission.
Correct.
Depending on if they.
Well, it'll get forwarded to you the way.
You'll, you'll make a decision of your way, but.
I just wanted to make you all aware that it was, and we do that sometimes. We don't just bring things straight to city council, but, but. So, there's really no action to take tonight.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Any further discussion on that ordinance? All right, if not, we'll close the ordinance committee.
All right, I'll open up Parks and Rec. We've got one item tonight for us. It's a, I'll read the resolution. It's a resolution expressing the willingness that the city of Springdale would apply for state grant funding for remodeling the playground.
Yeah, we're looking to get an outdoor recreation grant. It's a matching grant. And I believe it, we, a little bit over 200,000. So, we're asking you all to let us, or have you all match it to get the 400,000 that the playground costs.
It's a 50/50 grant.
Yeah, right.
We, and we've gotten one of those before that I know of.
We did it. Bobby Hopper.
Bobby Hopper, yeah.
So, they sound like it's a pretty good chance that we can get it, so. And of course, the prices are going to be going up. They've already went up about 8,000, so. And I guess we will find out, Colby, wouldn't it, August or September?
Chad, I don't, I haven't talked to them down there personally. I know Anna was in communication, working on the grant with them, but I don't have a date.
Yeah, if, if we're selected as finalists, we'll have to.
Go down.
You and I will have to go down there at least. We'll have to go down and present the project. And that's, we've had to do that before, so.
But it's a inclusive playground. And if you've been to Murphy Park, it needs a new playground. And this would help the whole community, the, the areas around Murphy Park, libraries right there, pools. So, it'd be very beneficial.
Would, I'm just kind of shooting off the hip here since Dean's here anyway. I, I would assume, not that the council, the council may not want to use it for that, but CDBG funds would be eligible for an all-inclusive playground in a, in, in Murphy Park? Okay.
Yeah, and if it's not, so if we pass this, y'all, they'd have to come back anyway with a more specific amount or?
Yeah, we would have to.
Right, right, yeah. Right now, it's 406,000.
Yeah, we'd have to come back, Kevin, and y'all would have to approve the, the contract because we would have to contract with the, with the playground equipment. And I, I assume they install their own equipment probably.
Correct.
Yeah. So, we would have to come back with a, a contract.
Mayor, you'd also have.
Yeah, go ahead.
You'd also have the ability, if my memory serves me correct, I believe there should be about $250,000 left in parks set aside after we paid the, the portion for Shaw Park on that last bill. So, we'd also have money in there as well, instead of taking it out of the general fund.
Chad, the third, whereas says that the plans for remodel have already been prepared?
Right, I already have a design.
Design, do we have an estimate for the entire design?
406,000.
For the entire design?
Yes.
Okay. So, basically, this would pay, if we were to receive.
If we were to get it, we'd get 203 or whatever and get to match it.
Yeah, I think they matched 50, I thought they matched 50% up to 250.
Correct.
And that's what it used to be. Okay.
So, once they lock, when we get a bid from them, are we locked into that where they can't come back and ask for more?
The playground?
Yes.
Well, if we win the award, then we'll know how, I'll ask them again how much, if it's gone up. But it'd already gone up 7,000.
Yeah, it's not locked in yet.
Yeah.
I don't think we can lock it in yet.
No.
Till we're.
Because it may not happen till next year.
I'll make a motion that the, we forward the resolution to council with a recommendation for approval.
Second.
I'll have to get a motion and second. Any other discussion, questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? All right, we'll move forward and close.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and open up the Personnel Committee. We have a resolution amending the 2022 budget for the Springdale Police Department and approving reclassification for 911 emergency dispatch personnel. Gina?
Our 911 center is a high-stress job with not the highest pay in the city. We've had a lot of turnover in the dispatch center. We have 31 positions budgeted for the dispatch center. Right now, we have seven open, or yeah, seven vacant positions and nine people in training. Training takes approximately six months or more. So, we looked at our job descriptions and we had the Johansson Group do another assessment of those positions. And the recommendation was made. And that's what the request is tonight, to upgrade those positions to help with the turnover rate and also to get our dispatch centers equal or above some of the other local centers.
Counsel, I know you, we really don't like to make changes like this mid-year, but if, if, we, we've got to be able to, to hold on to our dispatchers. And it was, at one time, Gina, I think we were down to 29.
Yes.
Out of the.
Well.
No, wait.
It was, we're at about half.
We were, we were down about half.
About half.
And we've recovered a little bit and, but a lot of those are in training now.
Right.
I serve on the state 911 board and I'm glad that we at least know now that Springdale's going to keep our dispatch center. We're going to keep our PSAP. There have been three awarded for Benton County, three awarded for Washington County. We thought for a while Springdale might, or Washington County might just get two. And there was, there would have been a chance that we would lose our dispatch center. But it looks like we're going to keep it. So, we need to. And that, the good news is we're going, in Washington County, we're going from four PSAPs to three. So, our piece of the pile will be a little bigger too. So, we get, we'll get more funding from 911, from the 911 board. But, but we just, it, I, I can tell you just from serving on that. But, but we've just, it, I, I can tell you just from serving on that committee, that this is a problem all over the state, and everybody's having trouble, because it is such a high-stress job, and it doesn't, it, it, we weren't paying, I don't think, what we were, we were going by what the study said, or, over a year ago, or about a year ago. But others have brought theirs up since then, and we're gonna have to compete with. Something else Springdale does that some of the, you won't have with some of the other centers, is we, we dispatch for all three disciplines, right? Blake, is that what you were gonna say? Now take, go ahead, you can explain that a lot better than I can.
Yeah, it was, although they, the dispatchers are police employees, they're vital to the fire department, and what you may or may not see in the report is the, the level of training that, that Springdale dispatchers have exceeds others in the region. And partly it's because they dispatch police, fire and EMS, but it's also because they do it at a high level, they have multiple accreditations which no other center up here has, and so their standards are higher, and I just wanted to express my support.
And Gina, this is, is that us marketable with the surrounding cities?
If we make this, this will help a lot. Right now, we are the next to the last with the next, with this pay increase, yes, we'll be competitive with everybody then.
We require more education.
Yes.
And we're, we're still not marketable with this, with that extra. I'm just, I want to make sure that we're doing enough.
This puts our starting pay, I've got this somewhere here.
And I'm sure that the Johansson study, they take that into account, is that right? The level of, of training and?
They did.
They did, yes, they did with this. Yes, this puts us still below Fayetteville and Rogers, but above everybody else. Washington County, Benton County.
I was gonna say, and when we, so at budget time, they'll still?
Yes, we can make up the difference.
Get that, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is, I think, I think this resolution would, is asking for it to be implemented immediately, that's why it's amending the budget not to exceed, there's a not to exceed amount.
And I'm, I'm assuming that not to exceed its amount, that's 70, is it 77,000?
Ernest, what are you looking at?
Oh, it's the revised pay scale.
Yeah, it would have been nice if we could have had that, Gina, the proposed pay scale.
Okay.
The, the 77,000 not to exceed, I'm assuming that's the number if all positions are, get filled, that'll be the difference.
Correct.
So likely it'll be less than that.
Right.
For the rest of this year.
Yeah. Gina, I'm kind of curious, what, after these individuals we have, have been trained, and you said it's about six months to get trained?
Yes.
How, how long is the average retention?
We have some employees that have been with us for a really long time, and then we have others that get into it and decide this is not for me. Retention, that would be, do you have any idea?
I don't, I don't have that recited, but we're, there's a pretty heavy turnover, and most of our dispatchers are active.
When we had a lot of turnover last year, a lot of those people were some of our senior dispatchers, so that's also affected our training, because those were the people that were doing the training.
And it all starts with the dispatchers.
Yeah, Gina, this isn't so much for you, but we're talking issues of money here and staying competitive in salary, I think that's just part of the issue though, so I don't, I see Chief Holt somewhere up there, I don't, is Chief Campbell up there?
He is out.
Derek?
Derek, yeah, Captain Hudson. So what I'd like to see at budget time next year would be some sort of inquiry of maybe mental health support or some other benefit that we can provide these individuals that goes beyond, I mean, I'm, I'm gonna support this, but we can throw money at it, but I think there's probably more aspects to this. And again, I'm speaking generally, and, and, but I'd like to have some of that looked into come into the year when we're allocating more money towards this, that it's not just a money issue and a salary issue, that we, there's other areas of support, otherwise I think we're gonna keep losing more people.
We actually have.
Yeah, I think we're actually, we're kind of leading in that area, really.
We have our wellness unit with the police department, we have a certified social worker.
Well, and then how many people do we have there? It's one wellness, we have, what, two?
We have one wellness coordinator right now.
And then who's, two people under him, is that what it is, like bullet?
We have one wellness coordinator that we hired, and a peer-to-peer program is under that, those are officers from the police department. I think we have probably 20 officer dispatchers who are on the first level department here.
And I'm just speaking for myself, but I mean, I would love to throw in more support, not just financially, but in any other way we can.
No, I agree, I agree, Kevin. I think that we addressed that at, at budget with, I think we started with just police, wasn't it? Or was it just fire? And then, then it was successful right off the bat? And then we, we incorporated it to both, is that right? The, the social worker that?
Kay, the wellness coordinator, he's been really good to help out with anybody that needs it, anyone in the city. So we've had him do some trainings at other departments as well, so.
But he does work for the police department?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
I'm gonna have the resolution be forwarded to council with recommendation of approval.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, any further comments? I didn't, sorry. Tina, you said there's approximately 30 positions?
There's 31.
31? And so is this a pay increase for all 31 positions?
All but the two, top two managers, and right now, we wanted to focus on the line people, and we'll take a look at those positions at the end of the year.
And the 77,000 that's in our resolution is for the balance of this year? So, so really, it's a larger number, annual number, but that's just for six and a half more months? Correct?
Yes.
Any other comments? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say same sign? Okay, closing, personnel committee.
I'm gonna open up the Community Development Block Grant Committee. I think Dean's gonna up there and speak, and this is a discussion on CDBG funding for fiscal year 2022, a program summary.
Captain, Mayor, to the council, the community development program is in the process of starting their consolidated plan for the five-year plan for 23 to 28, and our 22 action plan. We have two items that need to be approved from city council. We just got the announcement for the fiscal year 22 funds for $857,000, as you can see in your packet, and the summary shows how the money is distributed with your approval. Program administration is 8%. We're now looking at funding the Miracle League service replacement for $300,000. As you know, the nonprofits, last year, we have submitted applications for funding for the fiscal year 22. This amount equals up to 13.6%. This includes Compassion House, Hydration for Life, Reda Life, Community Clinic, Casa of NWA, VFW Post, Be the 479, and VFW Auxiliary. And these non-profit organizations are here, if you have any questions. That's part of that one.
I keep being the one to ask all the questions, but have we already approved this 13.6% to the nonprofits?
Negative, this is a brand new, we just got my, we just got the award letter stating that we're gonna get $857,000 for FY22, we're a year behind.
It seemed like we addressed this issue within the last six months, Mayor, haven't we?
This is branding.
I don't judge time as well as I used to. No, but, okay, so this, this came forward, we voted for this last, late spring.
So what happened was with the, after, after the CV, after COVID-19, all the nonprofits, found out that we had money to.
Right.
So what happened was now we, we got more applications coming in.
Yeah.
So the CV money though, that was, are, are we gonna have, we're also gonna have CV money this year, aren't we?
So.
Besides this 800 and crap?
We are the only city in, in the state that actually got a reallocation funding for $178,000. So with your approval, I basically, if y'all recommend this, I can go in, change the con plan, and we can get an additional $178,000 for COVID-19.
Did we get CV last year?
We got CV one and CV three.
Yeah, okay, yes.
Now, what happened was HUD looked at it, or the CARES Act looked at it, and says whoever spent their money in a certain amount of time got reallocation funds. We're the only city in Springdale, in the city, in Arkansas, that actually got this.
Okay, and so CV would be strictly for COVID relief, but?
Correct.
But if we allocated some money to the same nonprofit for CV and differently for CDBG, those are two different requirements, right?
Correct.
Okay.
So we have, we have our typical CDBG funding for the $857,000, and we also have COVID-19 funding for $178,000.
How are we, how are we progressing with the housing, getting the housing rehab money spent?
So right now, we have right at $600,000 in FY21 funds. Issue we're having is we have, back in the day, before COVID hit, we had 30 days to finish a house, so we went through the money pretty quick. Unfortunately, we got this, the FY21 funds like three months ago. So we're just start, now, starting to spend it now. To this date, it's taken 60 to 90 days to finish a house. We have houses right now that we did the HVAC system the first day, and now we're three months down the line trying to get windows.
Do we risk losing any of the, any of that housing rehab money?
Negative, negative.
Okay, good.
Negative. Basically, what happens is, when the time for the caper, I basically write up a segment in there to Little Rock stating, this is the reason why we have additional funding, and typically they're pretty, pretty lenient with me.
But it's not necessarily additional funding, it's just funding that hasn't been spent because of the backlog?
So what happened, there's a lot, there's a lot of states that were entitled for the CV funds.
Yeah.
But didn't take it. Basically, they, that, you know, if you want the letter, I have the letter also, basically what happened was, they said, hey, you know, Springdale, we have $178,000, do you want it? And city council, my.
Hey, you're talking, you're talking CV though, right?
Yes.
CDBG is what I'm talking about specifically. So do we risk losing any rollover money for that?
Negative.
And then you said something about fiscal year 2021 funding, what was that, was that CDBG or CB?
We have no more CV funds.
Okay, right.
That is, that's been gone for months now.
Right.
We have CV funds, sorry, we have CDBG funds from fiscal year 21 that we're spending now, it's around $620,000.
Because it's taken a while to get HVACs and finding contractors and things of that nature?
Correct.
Okay, but we don't risk losing that money?
Negative.
So this is 13.6% to nonprofits that you propose here?
Correct.
Can we not find any more and push it up to 15%?
If we're not finding any less, move it back down to 10.
What's the, what's the limit? Is it, is the limit 15?
Yes, 15%.
Okay.
Well, I mean, like my only concern with decreasing to nonprofits, one, this is, again, and I said, I stated this last year.
This is an increase.
Well, what, what? Right, right, but decreasing from last year, which was what, 13.5% last year?
Correct.
Yeah, and, but it's, I think it's gonna be the same issue, not so much COVID money, we're gonna get some CB money here, but.
That's only specifically, specifically.
Right, right, right. But with this, if we, if we decrease this from 13.5% down to 10%,
Right.
One, and I stated this last year, this is one of the ways that we can directly help the community out in giving nonprofits to help feed veterans, teen moms, whatever, and I don't remember off the top of my head, I think food pantries and so on, I don't, I don't see why we want to decrease that if we're having trouble spending this money. I, I mean, it's part supply chain issues, but I just, we're not talking $100,000. That 13.5% was what, was it 60,000 of an increase from 10,000, or from 10% to 13.5% last year?
It's like 17,000, it's not that.
Yeah, so I just don't see the, the hangup in going from 13.5% to 5%, where it's an area that we can really help out the community more direct, as opposed to, you know, harping over ten, a few $10,000 here. So I, I mean, I'd like to see the 15% proposal and just to, just to see how that looks, and which nonprofit we can help out with that, that's capable of handling it. That's just, my, my, my viewpoint on this, because I just think it was very beneficial, and at the end of the day, I mean, it's federal money coming down to us, it's not our taxpayers directly going to this.
What?
Now typically, for all the nonprofits, I put a, I send out a bulletin, I do a public notice, and I state that from January 1st to the 31st, that is when we need our applications for all the nonprofits, and that's typically when I get them all.
So is this all that you got?
Correct.
So basically, you just took all you got and put it out there, and it ended up being 13.6%?
Correct. We had one more we wanted to take away.
Well, I understand, I mean, and I'm just talking about historically, we had done 10% trying to make the primary focus, obviously, towards the housing rehabilitation, which we've had a lot of problems spending that money in the last few years, I understand that, and, and that's kind of been one of the reasons we want to make sure we spend all of our money that we get.
Right.
But.
So fiscal year 20, we did 38 houses, and this year, right now, we have nine on the waiting list, we have eight right now that are in some stages of rehab right now, it's just, we're waiting. So we have a lot on our waiting list, and we have a lot of houses we're doing right now, so there's no shortages of houses we're doing right now. I think Shane right now has three or four on his desk, so we have plenty of houses to get done.
So what does the council need to do? This is not in a resolution form?
I don't think, I don't think we make a decision tonight anyway, do we?
It'll be the next, it'll be the next meeting.
I, I, I think you just need to let Dean know what you want to see, what other, and I think Kevin said, I, I kind of, you know, I, I know the housing rehab has been very beneficial to our community, but.
Again, I think Kevin and I had the same discussion, Mayor, that we take the 3.5%, it's not even a new house. So all that money can go to, you know, Compassion House or Casa or whatever, and that can go to so much more.
Yeah, and what I was gonna say, I didn't finish, but what I was gonna say is that with our right now, with gas and food, and I, I'm just wondering if our nonprofits could put that to better use than, that's, that's kind of what I'm thinking.
Is, is 5% a new house?
It would do an emergency.
Okay.
Typically, an emergency would be like an HVAC system, that's about $8,000 to $9,000 now, and that's pretty close.
Well, and it's the last comment I'll make on this, I think. You guys, you guys have done a wonderful job in this, I think we talked a couple of months ago of how we, we got the second Marshalle East owned, homed underway or repaired recently, so this program's going well, and, you know, thanks to you and, and the staff, I really appreciate it. I would like to see 15% or something close to that, again, given the times that we're in, and that's just a, a way that we can directly help people quickly.
I'll agree with Kevin. So you, are we saying we're gonna raise these people up equally across the board to hit the 5%? Or because they've missed, the deadline's already been reached, right, for submissions? So.
Well, is, is that your internal deadline, Dean, or is that the federal deadline?
It's a federal deadline.
I mean, so we're, it looks like we're giving them what they asked for, correct?
Correct.
So, I mean, I, I, can it be increased to 15?
Yes, it can.
And how would you propose that we distribute that extra 1.4%?
We have three or four other nonprofits that did not put a submission in, I could call them and get them to submit something. That is a possibility.
Y'all wanting just to bring back the, what it looks like? Y'all wanting just to bring back the, what it looks like at 15, and that we see what it looks like at the 13.6, and if somebody wants to see what it looks like at 10 or 11, we can do, we can do that, what we all want to do.
I think Dean can handle that.
Okay. Thank you, appreciate it.
Uh, no other comments, that'll close out CDBG Committee.
Let's see, who is this? Committee of the whole, well, I'll start then. Item 11, and Heath, do you want to kind of just briefly set the, and I know, I know Mayor Moore's here from Lowell, and, and I'm sure you'll want to turn it over to him at some point, but do you want to just remind the council real briefly, remember there is a ballgame? Kind of why we're, what we're talking about?
Yes, I'll, I'll be brief with my portion. As the council will remember, we had been discussing with the City of Lowell, the capacity up with the Puppy Creek Interceptor. Right now, the total sum of that capacity is, is not being used, and just to put it very simply, it was much more capacity than Springdale would ever use, and much more capacity than the City of Lowell would ever use, but at that time, that capacity was created. The total capacity of that line, if you look at the whole thing, is 5,238, let's just use 5,000 gallons a minute, keep it simple. And right now, Lowell currently has about 24% of that that they own. Springdale has roughly the same amount that we own. That leaves an available capacity of about 2,600 gallons per minute. So to put that in perspective, right now, the City of Lowell's not even touching that. However, they would like to get some more capacity, because like Springdale, they have issues with development out near I-49, and they would like to purchase more capacity for the future and help participate in the upgrades that we will need to do to the Benton Farm Lift Station that will not just benefit Lowell, but greatly benefits Springdale. Those are improvements we need to do anyway. And under this scenario, Lowell would help pay for those upgrades, which would in turn help the City of Springdale. As has been mentioned before, and if you want more detail, Rick can go into it based on our studies that we've done, but based on the land use, based on the available land that is out there, and based on standard engineering calculations, even if we sold this capacity to Lowell, we will probably never use the available capacities there for Springdale. We're not advocating selling all the capacity to Lowell, but what we are advocating is, or recommending, that, and it will not hurt the City of Springdale, is that they would get a, a portion of that, that they would get roughly 2,000 gallons a minute, Rick? So we would still keep a bunch of that capacity, likely that we would never, ever use. So strictly from a business standpoint, I think it is a good deal for Springdale, it's a good deal for the utility. If we can get Lowell helping us pay some of these costs, especially on the lift station upgrades, and I don't have to tell anybody, things aren't getting any cheaper, so any help we can get on a project is most certainly welcome, and most certainly selling something that we're never gonna use, and it would be beneficial to someone else, would, would help us in that respect as well. An example of costs going up, I think NACA opened their bids, engineer's estimate was 65 million, bids at NACA for their improvements coming at 75 million, 10 million over, and that was the low bid. So I think this is a good deal for us to partner on this, to help share the cost, and then perhaps with some of that savings, we can end up spending that money on some other needed projects here in Springdale, and we know there's a bigger need than the R dollars, not just for the water and sewer, but for, for everywhere in the community. So with that, I'll let Mr. Ellis and, and the mayor answer any questions, if y'all don't have any for me, yes ma'am?
Um, so, how do you know that we're likely not going to, who, where did you get that?
Well, when, when you look at the land that's out there and look at the acreage and the potential for it, you just do a mathematical calculation, a good portion of that area, for example, is the Stone Quarry. The Stone Quarry, although it's a lot of acreage, it's probably not gonna have any housing developments in it. The one over by 612, Sharps Quarry, is it's, is it's known. So you take that out of the equation, so that leaves even more capacity for what's left. And when you do a standard engineering calculation of that, and what the density would probably be for that area, it doesn't nearly touch the capacity that is, is there physically there today.
And that's residential?
That's, that's some residential and some commercial, and some of it will never be developed, because there's gonna be roads, we know from planning and working with the city and, and what is going on in terms of future highway development, that some of that'll never be, won't even have houses on it.
If we would not be giving up our ability to expand?
No, ma'am. We would not be giving up our ability to expand, and I'll say that without reservation, and I think Mr. Pulverini will also.
So taking out the quarry, Heath, where does this, where does this boundary go down to? What would service this line? Anything south of the quarry? And how far?
Basically, south of the quarry, and east of the quarry, yeah.
To, to 112?
Yeah, we've got sewer and water out there already, near 112 and the 612 bypass.
So this is just an isolated area?
I'd say it's a, it's a basin that's there, but it's a pocket, and most, a lot of it's, there's some residential and some commercial in it, but there's also, a lot of it is, in terms of the current use of it, of course, you got the quarry there, and then there's gonna be some more development of highways and roads in the area as well.
And what would be, what would Springdale do if we did need to expand? What would, where would that put us?
Well, obviously, if you needed to expand, you, I believe you have the capacity to do almost anything you want in that area, even if you sold this capacity to Lowell.
So if we sold it to Lowell, we would still be able to put?
We would still, we would still have a considerable amount of capacity, we would still retain almost as much capacity as the City of Lowell uses in a day. And we'll never, likely never have, Lowell's approximately 10,000 people today, so the capacity that we would actually still keep and wouldn't be using right now would be the equivalent of the City of Lowell being in this pocket, I guess you would say, which is highly unlikely, at least in our lifetimes, I, I would not think that you would have that kind of density in there unless somebody built, you know, a huge 12, 13, 14-story building, and you got that many people in there. But then, if you got that kind of development, there's a lot of other things that you're probably gonna be dealing with as well. So on the likelihood scale, I'd, I'd put it highly unlikely that you'd be shortchanging yourself.
Heath, who measures the capacity, like, because we're saying we're not, we may not grow that area to the 10,000 or whatever you're saying, but Lowell is gonna continue to grow, and so how do we know if they're using 110% of their capacity that we're selling on? Do they measure that?
We can, we can measure that with some accuracy.
So how does that work? If they, if they start going over, do you shut off the capacity?
We put a moratorium on them, because you have to remember, and this has happened before unfortunately, and it has happened, so I'll give you a hypothetical situation. Lowell is approaching their capacity, because of the way our contract is set up and because of the way the statutes are, any development that comes through Lowell has to be approved by your Water and Sewer Department here in Springdale. So even if their planning commission okays it, even if they're great with it, if we don't approve it, that development will never get approved. So basically, we would have a moratorium on it, and through the process that even exists today, we would, we would put a stop to that if they had reached their contract or their, that capacity.
But somebody actively measures this stuff?
Not every day, but yes, we have the ability to put instruments in a manhole and measure that from time to time. We do have some permanent flow monitoring, I don't know if we have one on Puppy Creek? Yeah, no, permanent, but we can, you know, we could do it in any sewer in the community, we have devices that use basically a form of radar, and they can measure the flow. We, we do that right now with our capacity studies in the, in the city.
But what we may want to do, I mean, council, y'all, of course, get to decide what we do, but I, I'm wondering if we might want to hear from Lowell for just a few minutes, and then you may want to, I mean, you may want to forward this and, and take some time between now and the next council meeting to really, maybe Heath, you could provide some more maps and
We can provide some maps and some more detailed information for the council.
The committee may have questions, I know we were gonna talk about this a couple of weeks ago, and it didn't pan out.
There was, there was a scheduling misunderstanding.
So, would that be all right? I don't, I don't think
I mean, we're here to offer
Well, it could, it could just, it could go to committee, it could go to council without a recommendation, if y'all wanted to do that. And then you could have all these, you could have all your questions answered at council.
Well, another question I have for Heath, because I'll forget it, I'm getting old.
I think we all are.
So you're, you're talking about, when you're talking about that moratorium, it was just based off of sewer. So if they had a subdivision come in that was on septic and used our water and stuff, that, that's totally separate than what our discussion
That's a totally separate situation, and even today, if you say you want to do an estate lot somewhere, and the Health Department has a good perk and allows you to put a septic system on there, and we're, we're amenable to that, we'd still provide you water as long as you had an approved method of taking care of that waste through the, that was approved by the Department of Health. Yes, sir.
Okay, so subdivision could still go in?
It, it could still go in, as long as it met the requirements for
Right.
the, the land mass that would be needed to have a septic system, you'd have to have room for the lateral lines, et cetera. It had to be a pretty good-sized lot.
And maybe you could email me the answer to the, this question, that like, so if this doesn't pass, so what does that do for Lowell? What do they have to do in order to
I think I'll, I think, I think I'll let them address that issue, but it really doesn't leave them a lot of options. I think it puts them in a very difficult
Well, Mayor, Chris or Daniel or whoever's gonna speak, why don't y'all?
And we're happy to answer any more questions on the technical aspects of this.
Yeah, Heath, regardless of what we do here, if this gets forwarded and advances to anything, we need, we need to see some maps as to what this encompasses.
We'll give you some maps and get them color-coded with some explanations on them so that way you understand it. It's mathematically, it's pretty easy to understand, but yes, we're happy to provide some visual information to you, and we'll also give you the detail that shows the engineer's cost estimate. The cost assigned to this, I might mention, is, is in today's, well, it was six months ago dollars, so that might be different than today's dollars, but we'll, we'll get that updated and get that to you.
Good evening, my name is Daniel Ellis, I'm with Crafted Toll and Associates, and I'm also the, I'm acting, acting city engineer for Lowell through an on-call agreement. I think, real quick, I can say that the City Council did adopt a resolution accepting this contract and the terms of this about two weeks ago, and also, I think, the, essentially, if, if this did not get approved, it would, it would put a stop to residential development in the City of Lowell by moratorium. And when you look at sewer analysis, we look at sewer calculations, the Health Department specifies a specific loading rate that we look at per dwelling unit, and that is what your heaviest user, heaviest demand on a sewer system is. So, you know, in theory, Lowell could continue to move forward with commercial development for quite a while, but it would put a stop to primarily the residential development, single-family subdivisions, apartments, things like this, and I, I think as Mr. Ward had alluded to, when you see the maps between now and next week, unless we get into some really high multifamily density, in what areas can be served with this in Springdale based off of the topography, we'll never see this capacity used by either Lowell or Springdale. To be quite honest, and we're talking density, we're talking 50, 100 unit per acre type density residential developments versus commercial or single-family residential development. I think that's really all I have to add to it, Mr. Ward and the council, unless you have questions for me specifically.
Did the city see this coming?
Yes, we have seen this coming, we've been working on this with, with Rick and Heath and the Water and Sewer Commission in Springdale for probably about 12 months, 18 months now, something like this. I, you know, I'll be real honest with you, I think that if the councils and mayors of past eras in Lowell had taught, taken a minute to think about it, they would have probably addressed this at the front end. I, I like to think that Mr. Pulverini knew this was coming, that's why the additional capacity is there and ready for sale to the City of Lowell, because I think if he would have just designed that interceptor for what he knew Springdale was gonna need and what Lowell was wanting to pay for at the time, it would have been a smaller line, and quite honestly, City of Springdale wouldn't have invested as much as they did 15 years ago.
Thank you.
You bet.
Now, going back to what you said for just a second, you said that we, that the City Council has approved what?
The, the agreement that you are looking at with your resolution, the City of Lowell City Council's already approved those terms and agreed to those terms that were spelled out now. And now, and we did that based off of this, we were back before the council several months ago, kind of talking about, here's kind of what we're talking about in terms and agreements between modifying this, and, and the City of Lowell has already adopted that.
Thank you.
You bet.
I'd like to make a motion that we forward this without recommendation.
Second.
All right, I guess I took this. So we've got a motion and a second to forward it without recommendation, which would mean we'll just discuss it, if, if the council agrees, then it would be on the agenda next Tuesday night.
And they will provide drawings and
Yeah, we'll make sure Heath, or Lowell, yeah, y'all, y'all work together, yeah, council just, they'll want all the information they can get.
Our engineering staff will provide y'all that information, hopefully, we'll get a tee tomorrow, that way you got time to look at it. Absolutely, and you're welcome to, you're welcome to come by the office if you want more detail.
Well, we've got a motion and a second to forward it without a recommendation. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Okay, see y'all next Tuesday night. All right, I'm gonna turn this one over to Ernest.
This is a resolution authorizing the Mayor City Clerk to enter into agreement with the City of Fayetteville. This is a resolution authorizing the Mayor City Clerk to enter into agreement with the City of Fayetteville, adjusting the territory boundary between the two cities, the water boundary, and I believe there were maps attached to this. The last adjustment that was made between the two cities, I believe, was in two thousand and six. And Mr. Watkins is here, I believe, and Mr. Pulverini and Mr. Ward are here, if you have any questions.
So Bill Watkins here filling in for Will Kelstrom, who will present this to council when it comes up. Just so you know, it's zero to zero in the middle of the second inning, so...
Well, that's, that's strange, considering the last couple of games.
So this is two very similar properties that are both split by the jurisdictional line for water and sewer boundaries. Neither property can be effectively served by Springdale for sewer, both can be effectively served by Fayetteville for sewer. This was approved by the Water and Sewer Commission on the December, is that right, December fifteenth? Is that right? Went back that far, anyway, it's been approved by the Water and Sewer Commission, yeah. So it has to come to you for approval, that's the shortest version of this I can provide, be happy to address any questions.
A notepad just died on me, and I was looking at the map, there was a little bitty part over there on the east side of town that you're talking about, is in Spring, too little, yeah, overall, that are in Springdale that would now be serviced by the City of Fayetteville for sewer?
For sewer, well, for, it's the water and sewer boundary, so it'd be, be both.
For both?
Yeah.
And what have, what have they been doing prior to now?
Neither of these properties is developed.
It's down south of George Park, Seale and Willie George Park.
And, and the City of Springdale just cannot service that for some reason?
It can service it, it makes sense financially.
Will we ever? So this does not affect them taking these properties into their city, this is just giving them access to sewer?
Correct, this only adjusts the water and sewer boundary, service boundary.
I'm making a motion to forward this resolution to council with recommendation of approval.
Any other questions or comments? We have a motion in second, forward this recommendation for approval, all of the favor, please say aye. All opposed, say nay.
Thank you all.
I think we're adjourned.